Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we now open the floor for public comments on agenda items. Do we have any public comments this evening? Okay. I will turn the floor over to our presentations.
All right, we have three presentations this evening recognizing, celebrating, and honoring some very special people in the room. And the first one is for a new group of students and staff for the L Project. So I have a few words that I'd like to start out. So, good evening, everyone. Tonight, I have the honor of recognizing a truly remarkable initiative that emerged from heartbreak and transformed into hope. The L Project. In the wake of an unimaginable tragedy, the loss of one of our beloved students, Elle. Our community found itself in grief, searching for healing and purpose. From that sorrow, something powerful was born. A group of compassionate students alongside three dedicated staff members, Mrs. Sone, Ms. Enriquez, and Mrs. Sklar, came together to create a movement grounded in kindness, connection, and courage. The L Project is more than a group, than more than a support group. It's a living tribute. It stands as a beacon for how we choose to honor Elle's life, legacy, and positive spirit. Its mission says it all. We commit to living a life with kindness, curiosity, passion, empathy, resilience, and the pursuit of knowledge to live life like Elle. What began as an effort to support one another through the grief has come, become a source of strength and inspiration for our entire district. Through the L Project, our students are learning how to lift each other up, how to lead with heart, and how to turn pain into purpose. To the students who helped launch and lead this initiative, your strength, vulnerability, and leadership are nothing short of extraordinary. You have shown us what it truly means to honor someone's character, friendship, and legacy. To Mrs. Sone, Ms. Enriquez, and Mrs. Sklar, thank you for guiding with empathy, for modeling resilience, and for creating a safe space where healing could grow into hope. And to Mr. Peterson, your leadership, quiet strength, and unwavering support were instrumental in bringing this vision to life. Thank you for fostering a school culture where compassion and student voice are not only heard but empowered. On behalf of the Board of Education and the District Leadership Team and the entire District 76 family, thank you. Thank you for your vision, your voice, your unwavering commitment to live life like Elle. Let our light continue to sparkle on. I would like to introduce our three teacher sponsors. Mrs. Sone, Mrs. Enriquez, and Mrs. Sklar, who have a few words to say and to recognize our students from the L Project this evening.
Looking at each of the members of the L Project tonight, our hearts are full. These kids have spent the past school year grieving the loss of an extraordinary human being, Elle Kim. As the three co-founders of the L Project, we set out to create a space where our kids, families, and teachers can not only grieve, but begin to heal. We believed that one of the most powerful ways to process loss is through the kindness. And these kids have taken that belief and turned it into something incredible. They have thrived, showing more compassion, generosity, and heart than we ever imagined. From sharing kindness with our youngest learners at Diamond Lake, to lifting up strangers at the Best Buddies Friendship Walk, the members of the L Project have made this mission their own.
This is their legacy. This club is run by the kids, their ideas, their curiosity, and their hearts. What started as dreams have turned into real-world acts of service. Creating and selling bracelets to fund their efforts, volunteering time to support those in need, and constantly seeking ways to make others feel seen and loved. Their passion to make a difference has reached beyond our school and beyond our town. We were simply the catalyst that brought them together.
To each and every one of you, we are so incredibly proud. Your spirit, your kindness, your commitment, this is what it means to carry Elle's light forward. We should all be so lucky to know you all and love you. To Elle. We know you see them. We know you're working right alongside them. Because this, this joy, this kindness, and this healing is all in the name of the beautiful spirit you are and the legacy you left behind. So to our L Project members, always live like Elle. Embrace the curiosity, kindness, passion, resilience, empathy, and wisdom that lives within you. Because, in the words of a wise soul, "If my life is going to mean anything, I have to live it myself." And you are all doing just that. With all our love.
So now we will recognize the members of the L Project. So if you could please come and collect your certificate when your name is called. Nia Buttonagor. Buttonagor. Joanna Diaz. Lauren Eleanor. Leila Flores. Raquel Flores. Sol Celeste Gomez. Harper Hale. Who cannot join us tonight. Angie Hurtado. Davis Johnson. Eleanor Kirksey. Daniel Lazar. Eloise Martin. Rebecca Osorio. Elena Ramirez. Sophia Richter. Natalie Zach Gonzalez. Liam Sarmiento. And Elizabeth Sullivan. They're purple diamonds. And to come out and write this evening, Mr. Peterson, would you like to come up for a minute? For all of everyone's hard work, dedication, and leadership, we have gotten you a canvas that says, "We commit to living life with curiosity, passion, empathy, resilience, and the pursuit of knowledge to live life like Elle." We have one for each of our teacher sponsors, and for Mr. Peterson, and for Mr. and Mrs. Kim.
Well, I'll keep my, I'll keep my words short because I believe your guidance actions speak louder than any words I could, I could ever, I ever, ever say. I'm truly grateful and just honored to be part of this movement of so many young people, so many staff members that just felt like, hey, you know, through tragedy, we, we need to come together and we need to heal. And, and you know, I don't think that process is ever going to be complete. You know, I think there's always going to be kind of a hole or something missing, you know, with, with Elle's passing. But you guys made our school better, and you guys helped our community heal. You helped each other heal. And I'll be forever grateful for this. This is something that I'm going to take with me for the rest of my life. And I hope something that you guys can take with you as well and keep being, keeping Elle's memory alive. But you guys are, are amazing. And I can't thank you guys enough. And, you know, I, I hope you guys continue to do the thoughtful things that you guys have done and put others ahead of yourself like you guys have had, like you've done this year. So, thank you, everybody. Thank you.
All right, we have two more special gifts to give. If you remember, the L Project started out this school year planting a tree in Elle's honor. It's a magnolia tree. So when it blooms, it blooms purple flowers. And it did start blooming last week. I think the blooms came off today. But hopefully they'll rebud and come back in a few weeks when the sun comes out. But from the L Project and from all of us, her entire eighth grade class, we got a commemorative stone to put in front of that tree that says, "Remembering our friend Elle Kim, class of 2025." So we wanted you all to see it, and it'll be placed by our maintenance staff right in front of that tree tomorrow. So that's our gift, or L Project's gift to the community and to this school is that project. So you always come back, or excuse me, is, is this gift, and you always come back to visit it. And one last thing. As you remember from two weeks ago, I gave our three departing board members the book, Have You Filled a Bucket? As you guys know, I've been reading that book for 10 years to every grade level. So I started reading it 10 years ago, and Elle was in kindergarten nine years ago. And I'm emotional because I, I I don't know why, but I read to the kindergartners every year, and they give me a thank you note. That's a giant, have you guys seen them? You know what I'm talking about, the big post-it things? And every class, every year, has given me a thank you note for reading to them. For some reason, Elle's kindergarten class gave me that note. They were in Mrs. Garcia's class nine years ago. And Mrs. Garcia spelled buses wrong. So I framed it to show her that she spelled buses wrong and how funny it was and how I was always going to remember it. And then for, during the construction, I had it framed, and it was in class. And I moved it, and I told Mr. Thibodeau, I said, "Please put this somewhere safe because I don't want it to break. It's very special and it's funny to me." And when we found it last year after the summer, we're coming back to school, I looked at whose name was on it, and it was Harper, and Angie, and Elle's. I'm going to give this to Mr. and Mrs. Kim. Because it says, "Thank you for reading to us, visiting our class, taking care of the school, helping us, being kind, taking care of the buses with two S's, and protecting our school, Mrs. Garcia's class." And her name is signed on it. So I wanted you to have this presentation. If anybody would like to say anything. Are you guys all talking? All right. Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Kim, for coming and bringing your family. Just know how special she was to all of us and how her legacy lives on in every single friend and human that's standing up here. So, thank you. Thank you for being here in the courage and the resilience and the heart that it takes to come back. So we appreciate and love you. Thank you. Thank you, all of you. So, L Project students, if you'd like to follow Mr. Hanson out, he's going to take a quick picture with you with your certificates and your diamonds, okay? Do you want to bring? Yeah, we could do right there. All right, we're going to take a quick picture, and then we're going to
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys. You loved it. Yes, you did amazing. Thank you. We love you. Yes. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, ladies. All right, now I would like the District Leadership Team to join me to recognize our first-year staff members. So tonight, we have the honor of recognizing a very special group of educators, our first-year teachers. These individuals stepped into one of the most important and challenging professions during a time when the need is so great and the choices are so many. Yet they chose us, District 76, our schools, our students, and our community. In a time of a national teacher shortages and increasing demands, each of these educators made a powerful and personal commitment to serve. And from day one, they have shown up with purpose, passion, and positivity. They brought fresh ideas, open hearts, and a willingness to learn and grow. These qualities have already made a lasting impact. Being a new teacher is never easy. It requires patience, resilience, and a deep sense of mission. But this group has met every challenge with grace. They've built relationship, embraced our culture, and committed themselves to embrace, empower, and excel each child each day. Most importantly, they've done this all while living on, while living our Sparkle On core values. Showing care, compassion, and unwavering dedication to the students and families that we serve. To our first-year District 76 educators, thank you for choosing to be here. Thank you for giving so much of yourselves each day. And thank you for believing in the promise and potential of every student to ensure they learn, thrive, and feel seen. We are so proud to celebrate you tonight. You represent the future of education and the heart of our district. Please join me in recognizing and celebrating our amazing first-year teachers. I will say their name, and then a member of our District Leadership Team will recognize you. So we will do District Office, our District-level employees, Ariel Wala Konis, who is our occupational therapist, come on up. Ariel. No, I'm crying. Mr. Hanson, would you like them to stay up here for a picture? Or would, yes, they would like you to stay up here for a picture. Okay. From Diamond Lake, we have Cassidy Sterns. Oh, and Jessica Toledo. From West Oak Intermediate School, we have Annalisa Martinez. Lisa Bricker. Madison Gurary. I remember, I just said, is that your mom over there? Because I remember you were here last year when she got hired. So congratulations, Mom. And Janet Perez. West Oak Middle School, Jennifer Jones. Erin Sandusky. Jemaya McKim. Is Kyle Mesa here? There he is, come on over. Did I get everybody? Did I miss anybody? I feel like I went through the list, but I, okay. Oh, Holly, you're here. But you're first year! Get over here. Come on over. BLS. Seriously, this is such a great group. And first-year teaching is so hard. And like I said, I mean, you have so many choices of where to go and where to serve and spend your time. And we are so grateful that you chose District 76. So, thank you. You got your picture? Oh, Mr. Hanson's going to do a
That's true.
All right. Our third and final presentation this evening is going to be recognizing our students and staff for the core value of nurture from our Sparkle On core values. And I'm going to have Mrs. Sunny Morley come up and recognize her staff member from Diamond Lake.
It is with great pride and appreciation that I present this award for the core value of nurture, a value that's all about caring deeply, fostering growth, and leading with heart. Today, we're recognizing someone who brings this value to life in everything that he does, Mr. Spencer Kibler. Spencer nurtures something truly special in our building, a love of music. Through his energy, creativity, and passion, he has helped our students not only learn music, but feel it, enjoy it, and grow through it. His classroom is a space where all students feel seen, heard, and supported, and where their voices, both musical and personal, are valued. But Spencer's nurturing spirit doesn't stop there. He leads his team with compassion and care, always looking out for others and offering a helping hand. Whether he's building strong relationships with students, supporting a colleague, or stepping up in wherever he's needed, Spencer shows up wholeheartedly. We're incredibly lucky to have someone like Spencer at Diamond Lake School. Thank you, Spencer, for nurturing joy, connection, and creativity in our community every single day. And as you often say, friends are like diamonds. So come on up.
Spencer is choosing to pass.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
From West Oak Intermediate School, I am honored to recognize a very special educator who lives and breathes our, one of our Sparkle On core values of nurture. That educator is Mrs. Katie Levy, our exceptional STEAM teacher at Woos. Katie's impact goes far beyond the brushstrokes and building blocks of her curriculum. She touches the lives of every student in our school, not only by teaching them the artistic techniques and STEAM skills, but nurturing their creativity, curiosity, and sense of belonging. Her classroom is more than a learning space. It's a safe haven. It's where students feel seen, valued, and encouraged to be themselves. Whether it's the student who is discovering color for the first time or diving into a complex engineering challenge, Katie meets every student with patience, care, and a genuine love. What's especially inspiring is what happens outside of the scheduled class time. Katie opens her doors during recess multiple times a week to welcome students who may not feel connected to the playground or need a quiet space. In that room, they find more than just art and STEAM supplies. They find comfort, conversation, and the confidence to express who they are. Katie, your ability to create this nurturing environment, one where students grow, not just as learners, but as individuals, is extraordinary. You embody embody the heart of Sparkle On and the value of nurture with grace, warmth, and authenticity. On behalf of the entire District 76 community, thank you for the love and the light you bring to our students. It lights up every single day with your extraordinary efforts to nurture all the students in your care. Please join me in recognizing Mrs. Katie Levy for her outstanding dedication and unwavering commitment to nurturing the hearts and minds of our students. Congratulations and sparkle on. Okay, Katie is also passing. I guess we weren't leading by very good examples.
There she is. Okay. I know. I cannot be more happy to nominate Mary Lou Lozano for this month's superintendent spotlight in the area of nurture. For those who don't know, Mary Lou, she's she is more, she's more of a soft spoken person. As you can tell, she's hiding over there in the corner within our building, unlike the rest of our, unlike the rest of her PLC team, which is plumb full of extroverts. So although at times it can be challenging to get a word in during our morning or our weekly meetings, Mary Lou plays a positive and supportive role within her team. Along with this, she's a strong teacher and an integral part of our dual language program within our school. On the subject of nurture, Mary Lou stands stands out not only for her words, but her actions. When students and staff are around her, it is easy to feel her passion for all things she is part of. Her passion for the Spanish language, her passion for teaching, her passion for student self-identity, and her passion for students and colleagues alike have been instrumental in building and maintaining a nurturing environment where everyone feels accepted and respected. For those who do not know, Mary Lou, she is the GOAT of theme weeks. I've been told that she has, at home here, she has a closet devoted solely to silly outfits, props, and sorts, and all sorts of amazingness that is ready for any theme that we can come up with throughout the school year. Yes? Okay. It's true. In doing this, Mary Lou nurtures nurtures a fun and team-oriented atmosphere that brings our students, staff, and school together. Although soft spoken, her deep commitment to what she does and who and who she does it for does not go unnoticed. And she continues to play an incredibly important role in encouraging and nurturing all of us to do and be our best. So thank you, Mary Lou, for all you do at West Oak Middle School and allowing us to lean in, level up, and sparkle on.
No, that's all right. Okay. I'm not a speech person, but I started like typing and I'm like, oh, this is kind of cool. Okay. So I'm going to take a moment to thank everyone here at West Oak, everyone here and West Oak in particular. It means a lot to be recognized and earn an award like this. I associate nurture with the word family, and that's what this symbolizes for me. My nurturing characteristics come from my own very large and tight-knit family, and I thank them for all they have taught me. I strive myself in being a person my family, friends, colleagues, and students can go to, be it to celebrate, to vent, or just to be reassured. I pride myself in the idea that the glass is half-full instead of half-empty. I hope that my previous, current, and future students remember me as a person who heard them, encouraged them, and opened their eyes to different possibilities. I hope they see different perspectives and are able to put themselves in other people's shoes, because to me, that's what matters, to be a humble and empathetic member of a community. If you know my story, you know that my life and experiences are like many of our students. I am the first to graduate middle school, high school, go away to college, earn a bachelor's degree, and earn a master's degree. I enjoy sharing my experiences with my students and hope that these connections make a difference. Being a part of this school district for 20 years and enduring the ups and downs, the challenges and triumphs, the changes and plethora of experiences with different administration, teachers, and students has helped me to create a bond that's more like a family than a place I work at. It's a true wolf pack. I love the people that I work with. I love the students that I teach day in and day out. And Bhavana, I love the sparkle that you have taught us to embrace. To me, Sparkle On means diversity in your own way. Just be you. Shine like you've never shined before. Sparkle like there's no tomorrow. As I write this, I'm reminded of my high school quote that's written under my senior picture. Smile. You don't know who might need it today. Oh, and Brandon, I learned something about you recently. Kept note of it and wanted to treat you as well. It's not a diamond, but I think you'll enjoy them all during our last week and a half of school. Try not to stress eat it all in one sitting. Thank you.
So this is our last core value for the school year, and it's the first time, and I hope it won't be the last time, that we recognize someone who has an impact district-wide. So tonight, Mr. Rogers and I are proud to recognize someone whose daily work might happen behind the scenes, but whose impact is felt deeply throughout our entire school community. That person is our dedicated food service supervisor, Ms. Kim Vetter, who truly exemplifies the Sparkle On core value of nurture. I'm not going to cry looking at you, Kim. I'm going to turn this way. Every morning, Ms. Vetter is often the first person to walk through our doors long before the first bell rings. She is already in the kitchen preparing, organizing, ensuring everything is just right. Her goal is simple, yet powerful, to make sure every student in our district receives a nutritious, warm meal and that no child goes through the day hungry or unnoticed. But it goes beyond food. Mrs. Vetter nurtures our students with her care, consistency, and compassion. She sees them. She knows their needs, their preferences, and even their moods. She creates a welcoming environment where students students feel safe, supported, and valued. Her kitchen is more than a place where meals are made. It's a place where hearts are filled. Her work reflects a deep and selfless commitment to service. She shows up early and stays late. She never hesitates to go the extra mile for our team and our students. Whether she's adjusting menus, troubleshooting challenges, or stepping in where she's needed, she does it all with purpose and pride. Ms. Vetter, thank you for showing us what it means to nurture with action, with heart, and with passion. Your role is essential and your impact is immeasurable. I won't end because I think Eric would like to say a few words.
No, I could never say it as good as you just did. But Kim, you're truly the, one of the most valuable relationships I've ever had in my entire career. Each and every day, my conversations with you just, I know how much you care about all the students and all the staff here. If anything, you're one of the people that cost me the most money because you want to feed every single student every single day and are always just advocating for all of our families. I'm truly so proud to be, you know, to know you and to work with you. And so on behalf of each kid that you've served throughout your entire career here, I just know how big of an impact you have. I know, I know how much it can go unnoticed, but I truly appreciate you and as do we all. So thank you so much, Kim.
And I just have a funny, because every time I see Kim, we always chit chat. And she always ends with, oh, Bhavana, you're the best. And I turn around and I'm here tonight to say it in front of everybody. No, Kim, you're the best. So thank you. Congratulations and sparkle on. You are truly amazing. Come on up.
I'm going to cry. Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
All right. Now we are going to recognize a few staff members who are going to celebrate our students for the value of nurture. And from Diamond Lake, we have Mrs. Holly Young. Come on up.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. It is my absolute pleasure to present this award for the value of nurture, a value that speaks to the heart of who we are at Diamond Lake School. To nurture means to care deeply and intentionally invest in the growth and well-being of others. Today, I'm honored to recognize a student who lives out this value every single day, Joshua Sanchez. Come on up. Hey, Joshua. Joshua nurtures his relationships in the most genuine and thoughtful ways. He is social, funny, and kind, and he brings that energy into every corner of our building. Whether it's taking a moment to say hello to all of his classmates, greeting teachers by name in the hallway, or flashing his signature smile, Joshua makes everyone feel seen and valued. One of my favorite moments recently with Joshua was when I came into his classroom and he saw me and he pulled up a chair and he tapped on it for me to come sit down. He's just so thoughtful and these are the things that just come naturally to him. He wants to make people feel cared for. He regularly welcomes his teachers with a hug and shows true care for the people around him. So Joshua, thank you for nurturing your friendships and your relationships with your teachers. You make Diamond Lake a warmer, happier place, and we are so lucky to have you in our school community. Congratulations.
Thank you. And from West Oak Intermediate School, we have Mrs. Levy, who would like to recognize this student. This career, would you like to come up with her? So unfortunately, Yessenya just walked out. But I'm going to go through and read it for you guys anyway. It's my pleasure to recognize an exceptional fifth grade student who have had the privilege of having since kindergarten, Yessenya. Within the STEAM classroom, Yessenya consistently nurtures a positive and supportive learning environment. She offers thoughtful help to her classmates during projects, always ready to lend a hand or a listening ear. What truly sets her apart is her kindness and encouragement she brings to every interaction. Through her words and actions, Yessenya fosters team worth with two of her peers, builds confidence, and exemplifies what it means to be a nurturing nurturing and collaborative learner. We are so proud to celebrate her today.
Thank you.
And from West Oak Middle School, Mrs. Shelley Salzman.
Good evening. Okay. All right. Nurture, take care of, encourage, protect, and help. If you know Joanna, you know that all of these words are just a natural part of who she is. Joanna doesn't go out of her way to do these things. It is built into her personality. When she sees someone struggling in the classroom, she offers guidance just because she's sitting there and she can do something. A new club forms at school to honor a student's legacy. She signs up and gets right to work, offering ideas, lending a hand, volunteering, and giving up her free time. Her friends are being picked on or teased by the boys in my first period class. Don't worry. She's there for each and every one of them in whatever ways that she can help. She's the first one in my room each and every morning, and she's always the first one with a smile on her face. If I need something done, she's the first one to volunteer. When I can't tell if the room is too warm or if it's just me again, all I need to do is look over at Joanna, my human thermostat, to see if she has my handheld fan already going. A simple smirk tells me all I need to know. In my 24 years of teaching, I can tell you that there is not many students like Joanna. She is there to make others feel good or to help those in need. She doesn't look for a reward or a pat on the back. This is why, when I heard nurture was the last spotlight category, I knew I had to have it be for her. She nurtures all of us and brings out the best in those around her just by being herself. This, this world could use more Joannas. Congratulations, Kittle. It is my honor to present you with nurture.
He's going to pass, too. Well, thank you, everybody. For our two students, Mr. Hanson's going to go out there and take some pictures, as well as for our teachers and our staff members. Thank you so much. This was such a special evening. It's the end of our school year, but not the end of our celebrations. But we just want to tell you, thank you for being here tonight. We know how busy everybody is, especially in May, and we just couldn't do it without you. So, the students, the staff, the families, please continue to sparkle on. We just appreciate and are so grateful for you. Thank you. We are going to have the business part of our meeting. You are welcome to stay. It's very exciting, but not as exciting as what we just saw and heard. So, thank you again for coming tonight.
Oh, you're fine. Okay. So, we will move on to our business agenda for the evening. We have a number of items for action, and then the last item is up for review. The first item up for action is approving the omnibus vote agenda. Items under the omnibus vote agenda are considered routine and are non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. If anyone, board members, staff, administrator, or citizen wishes to have a separate vote on any item or items, that item or items will be pulled from the omnibus vote agenda and voted on separately. Be it resolved that the Diamond Lake 76 Board of Education accepts and approves the omnibus vote agenda, items A through D is listed. May I have a motion to approve, please?
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan? Yes. Ms. Bayless? Yes. Ms. Crutchfield? Yes. Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Ms. Pollan? Ms. Reyes?
That motion is approved. The next item up for action is personnel. Be it resolved that Diamond Lake 76 Board of Education accepts and approves the personnel items as depicted on the agenda. We have four new hires and three resignations. May I have a motion to approve? Yes. That motion is approved. The next item up for action is approving the 2025-2026 board meeting dates. Whereas the Open Meetings Act requires each public body to give public notice of its schedules of dates, times, and places for regular meetings at the beginning of each calendar or fiscal year. Therefore, be it resolved that Diamond Lake 76 Board of Education approves their 2025-2026 calendar, allowing for meetings to be held twice a month at the Diamond Lake School, 25807 Diamond Lake Road, Mundeline, Illinois 60060, with the exception of the following months, July 2025, September 2025, November 2025, December 2025, and January 2026. May I have a motion to approve, please? Moved. Yes. That motion is approved. And the next item up for action is approving the appointment of a treasurer. Whereas the school code instructs the trustees of schools to appoint a treasurer who shall be custodian of school funds and responsible for all receipts, dispersments, and investments of the school funds, and pays orders issued by the school board. And whereas Mr. Eric Rogers will assume the position of Director of Finance and Operations on July 1st, 2025, and possesses the qualifications set forth in Section 5-1B of the school code. Therefore, be it resolved, the Diamond Lake School Board of Education appoints Mr. Eric Rogers to serve as treasurer for Diamond Lake School District 76 for a one-year period beginning on July 1st, 2025, for the annual compensation of $3,000. May I have a motion to approve, please? That motion is approved.
Can I just make, I just want to make one correction on that, and we can do it at the, just reflect it in the minutes, is Mr. Rogers' new title on July 1 will be, I know it's written in the resolution, that way it's going to be Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations. And that was voted on. It wasn't just something I decided right now, just so everybody knows.
Okay, that is approved. The next item up for action is approving the mine site service contract. Be it resolved that the Diamond Lake 76 Board of Education accepts and approves the mine site service contract as presented. May I have a motion to approve, please? Second. Yes. That motion is approved. And the next item up for action is reviewing and approving the 2025-2026 insurance rates. Mr. Rogers, did you want to talk about them?
Absolutely. So, just want to give you an update on the, the insurance rates. It's been a little different process this year, so just want to give you an update on it. So, you know, for new board members, this is an annual process of working with an insurance committee to receive recommendations from our insurance third-party administrator. And then we take a look at our insurance reserves and determine what an appropriate raise might be in terms of the insurance rate. So, this year's marked a lot of transition for us. We were part of Lake Region Benefit Cooperative. It's a small cooperative of six school districts that make up this, this insurance pool. We've, we selected a new third-party administrator. It's a company called USI this year. It's really worked on modernizing our approach to, to an insurance pool. So, traditionally, our districts have all worked this kind of six independent districts, and we've not able to have the best economies of scale when attaining pricing. So, USI has really taken a look at our shared risk model that we have and all the insurance plans that we're part of, and it made a lot of aggressive recommendations. It's helped us with some significant cost savings this year. So, we're very grateful with their approach. And also, we're also bringing in a modern insurance portal. So, most employers have an open enrollment portal. You'd be able to log in, view all your insurance selections, have all the information there. It's something we've been trying to get the last 10 years since I've been here. Thank God, the first year USI has been here, they've already been able to implement it. So, we've been really happy with their service, and we're going to roll that out in our open enrollment in September. But to go along with that, they've really taken a deep dive in our, our insurance selections. So, besides medical, we, they've looked at our dental plans, what we've been a part of, and is able to bring us not only a cost savings for our standard plan, they brought us a more aggressive, a higher option plan that matches our, our medical coverage that we have. So, our dental rates have been able to go down about 28% on average with this, this most recent renewal, which hasn't happened since I've been here. It typically goes up in certain increments. But across the board for our standard plan, we've seen a 28, a 30% decrease. And they've also brought a higher option plan that we've still been able to bring our employees, and it's been at a decreased cost. So, this is just a value add to our district, especially when we're going out and soliciting, trying to find new employees, that we're able to offer really one of the most comprehensive insurance packages in Lake County. To go along with that, the medical rates, they were able to solicit some aggressive coverage for prescriptions. So, we've been able to bring, while most districts in our cooperative saw, you know, 6%, 7%, 8% increases, we've had a really low claims experience this last year, which means we've not had a lot of added costs for our district. So, because of that, we had a 2.8% initial renewal. Because our insurance committee has the option of selecting and adjusting these rates a little bit, we opted to round it up to a 3% increase, which would not only add a little bit extra to our insurance reserves, we're able to still reduce costs for employees out of pocket next year. So, each employee is going to see, on average, they were paying, it was $40 roughly a month for employee plus child coverage. It's now dropping to about $15 a month. So, out of pocket, every employee gets coverage for free. They're able to add their children on it for just about $20. And family coverage has dropped about $110 a month as well. So, since I first started, we were up at about $500, $600. So, the last couple of years, we've really, really been aggressive in terms of how, how employees have, and this insurance committee as a whole has approached our renewal cycle. And they've been able to, both have skin in the game where we can increase costs and still reduce the out-of-pocket expenses to employees. So, long-winded answer, we've had a lot of change this year, but we've still been able to reduce costs for our employees, which we're really excited for. So, the insurance committee wanted to bring this recommendation. And due to timing of the school year, we were able, we had to get this renewal a little bit later than we'd normally do. So, that's why we're bringing it to you tonight for both a review and for action tonight. Sorry for all explanations, but if you guys have any questions, I'm happy to answer that. Insurance is very fun, so.
Fantastic work to you and to the committee. I know, I was like, can y'all join this insurance plan? It sounds very good. Okay, then we will take action to approve the 2025-2026 insurance rates. Be it resolved that Diamond Lake 76 Board of Education accepts and approves the 2025-2026 insurance rates as presented. May I have a motion to approve, please? That is also approved. Sorry, I just lost my agenda for a second. The next item up for action is the consolidated district plan. Be it resolved that the Diamond Lake 76 Board of Education accepts and approves the 2025-2026 consolidated district plan as presented. May I have a motion to approve? Okay, that is also approved. And then the last item on our agenda is for review, and that is reviewing the 2024-2025 designation of interest earnings for the fiscal year. And Mr. Rogers, the floor is yours again.
I'll keep this one more brief. So, this is an annual process that the district keeps on in terms of just having some flexibility and where we can move our interest around. So, the district works with a very good investment partner to maximize our approach to where we put our school district funds each year. So, we really had another high year of interest earnings. So, what this allows us to do is move this money around to each specific fund and make sure we maximize, you know, where we'd like our money to be. So, for instance, we may not want too large of a surplus in any one fund. This will allow us to move it to certain particular funds if we need to do construction projects and things like that. So, this will allow flexibility, and if, once I do the May Treasures Report, I can greater, better determine where this money might be better allocated, and I'd provide you guys a write-up on where that would go.
Anyone have any questions? Okay. Thank you. That concludes our business agenda. Moving on to board discussion. Do we have any items for board discussion this evening? Okay. Fantastic. Awesome. Fantastic. Thank you. Great. And we had no FOIA requests, which is also great. No communications. We have, we don't have anything. No. That's a first. Public comments and petitions on non-agenda items. Do we have any public comments this evening? No. Erin's working on it. And others, I had two quick things, two quick things for others. I had sent everybody a text for scheduling purposes about your availability July 22nd. It sounds like we will plan to meet at 4:00 PM that day. So, thank you for everyone being flexible for that, and you will get more information as we get kind of closer to that date. The other thing is, I noticed that I got an email today talking about the joint annual conference registration is opening June 2nd. And so, Triple I. No, the registration always opens really early, and then Hyrum is great to sign everybody up and then help us forget and, and don't sign up early. So, yeah, the dates of that Triple I conference are November 21st to the 23rd. If anyone's interested in going, we can work with Hyrum to get you registered. And more information will be coming out on that, but I just wanted to get that on people's radar just because it is right around the holidays. And then also with the end of the school year, it's very chaotic for everyone, so. That is all I had for others. Did anyone have anything else?
So, I think it kind of depends on the year. They do have a lot of sessions for like new board members, and they have some specific stuff. They will put out, I think, June 2nd, we will get kind of the agenda, right? With some, some of the more specific sessions, so you can kind of see what they have. And then, right now, they have like the speakers that'll be there. I would say generally about half the board attends. Kind of depending on the year. It just, it kind of depends on the year and also some of the topics. Like right after COVID, there were a lot of topics about COVID and transition and obviously, and you know, depending on what's going on, sometimes topics are, I would say, are more relevant. The, the one thing, though, is we always have someone go to vote on the resolutions because on the Saturday, all the boards will send one delegate to vote on the resolutions that are issued by IASB. So, we as a board will discuss those when they come out in the fall and kind of agree on our positions. And then we usually will just come to an agreement amongst who would like to go and represent the board. It's a couple-hour process. So, depending on, you know, if you want to go to a session or not, I think usually we try to work that out with and I can do it at that time. And we say downtown, yes. Although you don't have to if you would not like to. But yeah, that's kind of it in a nutshell. But we could tell you much more about it, too, if you want. Yeah. Yeah, there's a lot of nice sessions like that. It's, it's also, I think personally, interesting to meet people from districts all over the whole state because we don't generally interact with a lot of the districts, like in the southern part of Illinois necessarily, and their concerns and interests are very different usually than ours. So, it's kind of, it's good to kind of get the perspective of what everyone is dealing with across the whole state. So, you kind of have an understanding of sometimes the different legislation that's coming out or different resolutions, or so that's very interesting, too. Maybe this year we'll get like matching tracks. There are some boards that very much like match. There are some boards that very much like match. Yeah. We could really bling it out, but.
Well, we have sparkle lanyards.
We've done.
We do have sparkle lanyards.
Hold my hair.
I know. That's why I don't.
No, like the first year I went, people aboard had matching like an Adidas-type tracksuit for the district. It was amazing. I would fully support that. Don't break out my cricket. Get going.
You got a cricket, too.
So we'll go. Full outfit. Anyway, not to digress, but yeah, it's, it's, I would recommend if you can, if it works with your schedule, I would recommend going this year, especially as a new board member, just I think that they do have a big chunk of the agenda that is kind of focused on that. And probably your first year, at least it's the most beneficial to go to. And then I would say it just kind of depends on the topic. Anything else for others? Okay, then we do not have executive session this evening. So can we have a motion to adjourn?
Bayless? Yes. Mr. Becker? Pritchfield? Yes. Hale? Yes. Ms. Pollan? And?
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, everybody.
I mean, Elise, I'm going to need you to put like a vote in here.